The first two is here as customers. Well, if we're a customer, doesn't that mean that you're sort of like a corporation?
Well, we call yourselves customers because you're paying us money and...
But a customer has the choice to pay or not to pay.
Well, I mean, if you have that... So if you decide not to pay, then, you know, recovery process will be taken.
So that's what I'm saying. So you're referring to us as customers, but then we're forced into paying. So we're not really customers. That's the way I see it anyway.
Alright, okay.
It says, "You must complete and return the information within fourteen days. Failure to do so is an offence." Under what law?
I don't know. So what, I mean, which, where, you know, what's this in context with? Okay. What's the magistrate's of granted liability order? Yeah, so we've taken a liability order. If you haven't paid, then you will be, you know, we will...
Use force? Will you use force against him if he doesn't pay, sir?
Excuse me. Can I just finish what I'm saying there?
I'm sorry, I didn't realise that. I touched a raw nerve there. I can see it in your face.
Just bear with me a moment, please.
Didn't go like that, did he? Want to go and sit over there?
Is that my stuff?
Yes.
Is that the rest of the stuff he bought? Oh no, he's got the rest of it, hasn't he?
Try and get him to use force against you.
Oh, there you went. It would be the...
Will the council use force against me? Is the question. Did you see his face? See by your face that I've touched you.
Hiya.
Hiya.
Sorry.
No problem.
Let me see if I can help you.
Sure.
You're going to have to start at the very beginning. Is it council tax that you're having trouble with?
Yeah, just want a few questions. Been to your website, about there?
Revenue Service. It says, "An unpaid council tax recovery order."
Yep. And I've just noticed a few things. Basically, you refer to us here as customers.
Right.
Now, a customer is, like, say if I go into a shop and I buy something, then I pay for it.
Yeah.
But if I don't pay council tax, I get taken to court. So it's almost like we're not a customer because we're forced into paying.
Alright.
And obviously, if we don't, you take us to court and get a liability order.
Yeah.
So I'm just clearly...
Well, in general, sir, Ruscliffe Borough Council refers to all of the residents as customers. That's just our policy.
Okay.
It could be a resident or it can be a customer, but we refer to you as customers.
It's confusing because, you know, Nottingham City Council say people, but then they call us residents and citizens. But then you're... Then if you don't register your name, then they call you illegal occupier. An occupier is an illegal army, isn't it? That's what it says in the dictionary.
I think, to be honest, I don't know how you want to pick it to pieces, really. It's, you know, that's just the way it is. I mean, if I get... If somebody doesn't know who I am when they write to me, they put "to" the occupier of the name I am, they put my name.
And it says, "You must complete and return information within fourteen days. Failure to do so is an offence." Under what law is that?
Again, it's... Each council will have... Well, will be binded, really, by the central government and what they say. And our collection policy is this, really. Council tax is a legal tax, and it's due on the first of every month.
Where does it say in law that...
Failure to pay it...
Anyone's... Excuse me. Where does it say in law that anybody's obliged to pay council tax?
Well, I would kind of think it is, really. I mean, if you... If you don't want to... To be honest with you, you try...
We don't want to break the law, but we just ask them questions, that's all. I quite happily pay the council tax...
Council tax is a legal tax, at the end of the day.
Do you have the law where it says it's legal?
If you want to go through every single... If you want to go and see a solicitor regarding it, then fine.
I'd like to see one of them, because they're all in the club together.
At the end of the day, if you don't pay your council tax, you will get taken to court. And ultimately, it will end up in a committal or something like that.
So the council will use force against you?
So I'll take it then...
Surely that's slavery, isn't it?
You don't know what the law is?
No, it's not slavery.
I take it you don't know what the law is?
I mean, if you want to go into, like, legal documentation and things like that, I do suggest that you contact...
It's a very easy request, you know, where does it say in law that you're obliged to pay council tax, that's all.
Yeah, it is legal, yeah. You are legally obliged.
Could you show us the law, please?
You don't know what the law is, is what we're saying, basically. Yeah.
Do you have a copy of the law?
We can have a law. We can...
Sure, great.
Legal laws, if you like.
Because, I mean, I've looked and I can't find it.
Sorry, we're not being funny or anything. It's just, nobody seems to ask this question. It's so... You know, if you're forced against your will to do something that you don't want to do, why should you be forced into paying for something?
Everybody has to pay council tax, though, don't they?
Where does it say?
Only if there's a law saying it so. That's what we're saying. I've looked and I can't find it.
Where did anybody agree to it?
Well, I think you're asking in the wrong place then, aren't you? I think you're going to have to... Let me just phone up...
This is the council, isn't it? We've got the right building. Not being funny or anything, I know it seems...
Well, I kind of like getting a bit...
I can see the look on your face. It's of shock and horror.
Well, no, not really. I'm just... I think you're being a little bit, um... Not... I don't think that you're being, um...
It's not a hard request, though, is it?
What are you actually requesting? You're requesting information regarding why is it...
Just where does it say in law that everybody has to pay the council tax? Where did we agree to it?
One of the things I did find out is, in America, there is no law that says you have to pay income tax.
Everybody that works for the IRS, the Inland Revenue Service, doesn't pay any tax in America. Because they know that there's no law which says that you have to pay any tax whatsoever. We did ask this question to Nottingham Law Society. The lady said she hadn't got her law book with her.
Right, so where did you go then, then?
We're going to go and see them again to go and have a look at her law book. But I doubt that she's got one.
Okay. Uh, let me just try and think. This person to ask will be...
A lawyer? You must have an...
In-house legal team?
Yeah.
I mean, you can ask for information regarding this under, like, Freedom of Information Request and things like that, you know. So you're quite welcome to put that in writing and request it. Or you can email it through. And then you can get your absolute definitive answer, should you require that. Okay. Do you want to do that?
Well, if you want to just give them a quick ring, because they might be able to answer it just over the phone.
It should be a pretty easy question to ask, sorry, to answer. Somebody say, "Oh yeah, it's this law," and it's section there. It's right there. We know the council do such wonderful things for the community. They're not a private registered corporation for profit, are they?
Hiya, Paul. It's Nick in Customer Services. Are you alright? I've got a couple of gentlemen here that are requiring some information regarding why or the legal definitive of why they've got to pay council tax.
Just where does it say in law?
And where does it say that it's the law that you have to pay council tax? Alright, can you direct me to them so I can print it off and give it to them, please? Yeah, brilliant. Can you... You just... You want to know why you have to pay...
No, what law? Just what law it is.
Or what law? Or...
If they can just tell you the thing so I can go and look it up, that'd be fine.
Brilliant. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that's great. Yeah, can you email it to Mark Miller, though? Because I'm sat at his computer at the moment, and then I can print it out. Um, Miller, yeah. 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 Thank you. Thanks. Bye. Right, he's going to send me all the information, so you can have a read through that. It will direct you to anywhere else, should you want to investigate it further.
Got another question.
Thank you.
It's about bailiffs, and it says bailiffs are used only as a last resort. Alright?
Yeah.
And then it goes on to say, "They have legal powers." Now, I've looked into this, and the bailiff that you use at Equita, which is a private bailiff company, they're not court-registered bailiffs, so they don't have any powers.
Which court do they go through?
What powers are you talking about there? Powers as in to change your...
It says here, "They have legal powers." Again, what legal powers do they have? Because the private bailiff has no powers whatsoever.
Yeah.
But you said here they have legal powers.
That legal powers as in...
The council said they've got legal powers.
The council, sorry.
I mean, I...
Is everything okay?
They're allowed to... Beg your pardon? What did you just say?
Is everything okay?
Yeah, absolutely fine. They're allowed to, um, come onto your driveway. They're not allowed to enter your property unless you ask, unless you physically invite them in. But they do... I think what that's referring to is, if they're allowed to come into your property, if you invite them in, and then what they'll do is, um, they will then have a look at the goods that you've got. So if you've got a twenty-five, eight-inch TV...
Don't watch TV.
...or whatever. I mean, I'm not referring to you, because I don't know what you've got in your house. What I'm referring to is, in general...
In general, yes, of course.
And then they are allowed to take the goods from your house, should you not pay your council tax.
But what happens if you don't allow them in?
If you don't allow them in...
Can't take anything, can they?
It has to come back to the council.
Okay.
If you... If they... If they... Put it this way, if you got contacted by a bailiff and you... I don't know, you're in hospital for months or whatever, they couldn't get into property. They couldn't... There was no way of communication whatsoever. They kept knocking on your door, nothing, nothing, nothing. It would be passed back to the council.
So the same would apply, then, if you just ignored them?
It's up to you whether you allow them.
I'm not saying do it. I'm just, you know, trying to get... Um, I've got a... Is the council a court?
No.
Okay, well, here it says, "Committeal proceedings." This will mean that the council will issue a warrant for your arrest.
Surely any court's allowed to issue warrants?
Well, the council goes to the courts.
That's not what it says here. It says, "The council will issue a warrant."
Well, all of those that you're picking out now, what I suggest is, if you don't think that that's worded correctly, I would email to Revenues, because it is Revenues, isn't it?
Well, surely the council wouldn't say that they would issue a warrant if they weren't.
The council will go to court to request that warrant.
Why doesn't it say that?
So, well, in that case, if you're not happy with the way it's worded, then I suggest...
No, I'm very happy with it. It's just...
It just doesn't seem correct. I would have thought that the council would have used proper legal advice when giving this public information, wouldn't you?
What I suggest to you to do is, like I said, Freedom of Information, it will go straight to our legal department, and then they'll just answer anything that you...
How long does it take for them to reply normally?
Generally, it has around about a fourteen-day turnaround. It can be quicker. But that's just what we say, just allow us that bit of time, obviously, because some's greater, some is more in depth than others, you know.
Do they have to reply by law? Or can they refuse to reply?
Oh, actually, I think it's twenty days. I think they get twenty days for a Freedom of Information request.
But they'll reply to you.
Did you hear about the guy in city council that got sent to prison yesterday? For non-payment of council tax.
Alright.
Seventy-two-year-old bloke, and they sent him to prison for twenty-eight days.
Here we go. Yeah.
I thought that you couldn't get sent to prison for... Get sent to prison for a civil matter.
As requested, the levying and collection of council tax is provided for by the Local Government Finance Act 1992. Uh, what I think you mean is, I go and pull it out. Like, I was just going to send it to you, mate.
Local Government Finance Act 1992.
It may be quite long.
I would imagine most of this legislation is. And written, of course, illegally, so we don't understand it.
Doesn't that go against the Bill of Rights, my friend? Because the Bill of Rights, section twelve, says that no man or woman, no person may be given a fine or a forfeiture value, first being put on the court of law. So I suppose a council tax is almost like a fine, isn't it?
Well, they'll... Obviously, they'll class it as a tax. Hmm, interesting. But again, Local Government Finance Act. We'll see...
So it's an act in a statute, it's not law, is it?
Yeah, I'm fairly sure that it won't apply to a man or a woman.
Almost definitely not. No, it'll apply to a person. Legal fiction or somebody with somebody's name. Do you know if he were taken to court? But please excuse me, I'm not being funny or anything. If he was taken to court and I was to stand in the court, and the judge was to say, "Can you confirm your name, sir, that you owe this council tax?" If I told him that I was a man, and that I don't acknowledge the person, "I'm me. I'm Patrick." So, um, I'm not the mister. I'm actually a man. What would he do, do you think?
I don't know, do you? I don't know. Why?
Well, we think that they're actually looking for the legal fiction, the Mr Patrick Moa.
You think? What's that, eh?
That they actually want you to confirm your name and address?
Yeah.
Because it seems in courts, they only deal with legal fictions. They don't deal with men or women. They only deal with the person. But I'm a man, I'm not a person. Aren't you a woman? I'm not a person.
Yes, she's a woman. I can confirm that.
Most definitely, please.
I've not really... Sometimes I have not questioned that. What's that? I don't know. I don't... I've never thought about it, to be quite honest, so...
No, one of the things we found out is, like, government paperwork always comes with your name in all capital letters.
Like on gravestones?
Yeah, and that refers to your birth certificate, which is your legal fiction created when you were registered. And so when you go to court and they ask for your name, you don't realise it's written in all capitals. So when you say, "Yes, I'm Bob Smith", you've confirmed that you're the legal fiction Bob Smith, or you're part of a joint with a legal fiction.
I've never... Do you know what?
We woke up a few months ago, and we just decided to start asking questions about everything. Because nobody seems to question it. But we noticed the more we questioned, the more... Well, not you yourself, but other people have become quite angry.
Okay. Well, to be quite honest with you, I suppose a lot of the time, people are angry because you kind of get angry if you don't know the answer to it. But the questions that you're asking, really, I think...
It's viable question, though, isn't it?
You know, I wouldn't know.
Sorry, what's your name?
Nicola.
Hi, Nicola.
Right, the whole act. Here we go. Here we go. You've chosen to open the whole act. Go on, Nicola. Let me take it there. See if I can print it on out for you.
Just if you can see how many papers. If it's loads of pages, then don't bother. I'll go and look it up myself.
Or could you ask the chap on the phone, or whoever you spoke to on the phone, just which section is where it says that everybody's obliged to pay it? Didn't somebody mention the Local Government Finance Act 2009 before?
Can't remember.
This is 1992.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you can take it. It's a light reading. It might be boring. It might not be boring. I've just...
That's pretty interesting, Nicola.
That's two of two hundred and fifty-eight pages.
No, don't go and print it off.
I've written it there. You can refer to that. But it's like Local Government Finance Act.
Do you know which section it is?
I don't know what section it is.
Nicola, is it possible to ask the person on the phone?
Right, so part one. So if you just... If you read through part one...
I think it's... I've read this before. I've read the Council Tax Act. Because it says, "The person liable to pay the council tax is the..." Is the... Sorry, "The responsible person to pay the council tax is the liable person, and the liable person is the person that gives the name." So what you were saying, if you don't give your name, who are they going to tax? But if you don't give your name, then they use force against you. But that's slavery. We didn't agree to that, did we? The government and the councils, the police, everybody here is our public servants, which we pay for. For our interests, for the men and women that live in the county or the city.
See, I can't understand why, when he said that, why didn't you say it's on page such and such? Or it's paragraph such and such?
Because this... You know, well, if you've looked into a few things yourselves already, you must know that, like, legally, when you look at something that's written down in legal format, it goes on and on and on and on.
And leads you round and round in circles, and you still never get anywhere.
And that's why people mostly publicly can't be bothered to judge us, can't be bothered to reveal. But you've got about two hundred and odd pages.
It's a good question, though, isn't it, Nicola? Yeah? You know, where does it say in law, anybody's obliged to pay any tax whatsoever? We did get an answer before. How would a brain surgeon be able to deliver a baby? I think the lady was a little bit confused. So I asked her, "Where does money come from? Where do you think money comes from?"
You would think, though, with a question like... Because that's very important. You would think that they would just be able to go bang, like that.
Yeah, it's such and such law, section whatever.
You would think so, wouldn't you?
Straight away.
Yeah.
We called HMRC as well. Do you know what he said when I asked the question? "Taxpayer, council taxpayer as well, I just want to ask one question." "Yes, sir, with pleasure." "So where does it say in law that anybody has to pay any tax whatsoever?" Do you know what he said? That's a new one. Really?
And he couldn't actually find the law that said you have to pay tax?
He spoke to his manager and still couldn't find it. That's HMRC, the Magistrates Revenue Collection Service. And what if the Queen knows where it's in law, that anybody's obliged to pay any tax? The Bank of England seems to magic the money out of thin air, don't they?
But then you've also got your arguments. All right, then, why should we pay tax? But you want... If you collapsed in a... Having a heart attack, you'd want the ambulance to come and pick you up, wouldn't you? You'd want the doctors to, like, save you.
Yeah, but income tax doesn't go to any of that.
No, but your council tax goes towards Nottingham County Council that provides your 999 services, not your income tax.
Oh, we've looked into that. Nottinghamshire Ambulance Service, the fire service, they're actually a private registered corporation for profit for their shareholders. And we can bring in a company report on them if you're interested.
And so is Ruscliffe Borough Council as a private limited company.
For profit for its shareholders. And we asked if we could become shareholders of Ruscliffe Borough Council. And they said, "You have to join a members' club."
And you're not allowed to join it?
Unless you're higher up, like in the...
We did look all these things, and we found that even Nottinghamshire Police Force, you can look that up on Dunham Brad Street, a credit reference agency, and they're a private for-profit corporation.
They've even got CCJs against them. And Nottingham City Council has. Yeah. You see how we've opened a bit of a rabbit hole?
Well, yeah.
I mean, I'll quite happily pay. I don't want to get into any trouble, but I want...
Have you paid it or not?
Yes, of course. I don't want to go to jail. I don't want to go to magistrate's court. I don't want force to be used against me, but it's looking pretty much like, you know, that we're slaves. I thought, when I was born on this planet, there was just water and land, that I was free. And that... But I realised that I've only got free will. But that free will can be impeded. So I can be forced to do it.
I mean, obviously, if there is no law, then at some point, if I can't find it, then I'm going to stop paying council tax. Because if there's no law that says I have to pay it, why should I pay it?
But obviously, if the bailiffs come to your door, if you don't give them the name, they can't do anything. So why should you pay it anyway? What happens if everybody stopped paying it? Then what would the government do?
Yeah, they'd have to give up, wouldn't they? They'd have to do with the poll tax.
Well, they'd just have to... They'd just...
No, they'd just change the law.
Nicola, you know when you go to a bank? Say if I went for a thousand-pound loan, and I've done this before. You go into the bank, they check your credentials, check that you're working, your salary and stuff. And say, "How much would you like to borrow?" "One thousand pounds." So I've got my card here. The machine's outside. When can I take the, you know, the paper money, with the pictures of the Queen on it, at the cash point? And they say, "One minute." And he goes with his finger, he presses one, and then zero, zero, zero. "So where did that money come from?" He says, "My finger." "So where does money come from?" He says, "We magic it out of thin air with our finger, like that." I says, "Well, whose money are you landing me?" He says, " Yours, sir." So when you sign the form, you actually make the money. You write a promissory note for us, which we sell on to somebody else. The bank told us this. They haven't got any money. They give... We make the money by signing the document, and then they give us the pictures of the Queen. So one is none, and zero is nothing. But you can't have nothing. You can't have none before you can have nothing, can you? It's just... It feels like I've landed on the wrong planet. It really does.
Yeah.
I think this is the only planet in this particular system where you have to pay to live on.
Well, I would think so, yeah.
It's strange, isn't it? Because I thought we put everything here for free in previous lives. Or didn't God give it? It's all for free. Why should we have to pay for anything?
Thank you for your time, anyway.
But Nicola, it's been lovely to meet you.
He's been very enlightening. I'm going to have to go ask myself a few questions about that law. There you go.
That's a website I run. You might find something interesting on there, because we discuss all this sort of thing. Have a look on the latest news headlines.
What? This is yours, is that?
Yes. That's my YouTube channel, where I put videos explaining what I found out.
Yeah.
And... We just like to ask questions, really. We question everything. I actually do talks all over the country. People ask me to come and do a talk and explain all these sort of things. So we keep finding out different things because of asking questions. Most people don't seem to ask questions. You remember at school? Well, Miss... I thought we had to learn. Should I put it out? It was lovely to meet you.
Thank you.
Come on, Dan.
Have a nice weekend.
I'm going to go on this. Thank you.
Okay, have fun.
Oh, no, thank you.
Oh, there's Cures for Cancer on there, by the way, as well. About sixteen of them. There's sixteen cures for cancer, by the way, that the government doesn't want you to know on there. Yeah. Thank you, everybody. Have a nice weekend.
It says, "The council will issue a warrant."
Well, all of those that you're picking out now, what I suggest is, if you don't think that that's worded correctly, I would email to Revenues, because it is Revenues, isn't it?
Well, surely the council wouldn't say that they would issue a warrant if they weren't.
The council will go to court to request that warrant.
Why doesn't it say that?
So, well, in that case, if you're not happy with the way it's worded, then I suggest...
No, I'm very happy with it. It's just...
It just doesn't seem correct. I would have thought that the council would have used proper legal advice when giving this public information, wouldn't you?
What I suggest to you to do is, like I said, Freedom of Information, it will go straight to our legal department, and then they'll just answer anything that you...
How long does it take for them to reply normally?
Generally, it has around about a fourteen-day turnaround. It can be quicker. But that's just what we say, just allow us that bit of time, obviously, because some's greater, some is more in depth than others, you know.
Do they have to reply by law? Or can they refuse to reply?
Oh, actually, I think it's twenty days. I think they get twenty days for a Freedom of Information request.
But they'll reply to you.
Did you hear about the guy in city council that got sent to prison yesterday? For non-payment of council tax. Seventy-two-year-old bloke, and they sent him to prison for twenty-eight days.
Here we go. Yeah.
I thought that you couldn't get sent to prison for... Get sent to prison for a civil matter.
As requested, the levying and collection of council tax is provided for by the Local Government Finance Act 1992. Uh, what I think you mean is, I go and pull it out. Like, I was just going to send it to you, mate.
Local Government Finance Act 1992.
It may be quite long.
I would imagine most of this legislation is. And written, of course, illegally, so we don't understand it.
Doesn't that go against the Bill of Rights, my friend? Because the Bill of Rights, section twelve, says that no man or woman, no person may be given a fine or a forfeiture value, first being put on the court of law. So I suppose a council tax is almost like a fine, isn't it?
Hmm, well, they'll... Obviously, they'll class it as a tax. Hmm, interesting. But again, Local Government Finance Act. We'll see...
So it's an act in a statute, it's not law, is it?
Yeah, I'm fairly sure that it won't apply to a man or a woman.
Almost definitely not. No, it'll apply to a person. Legal fiction or somebody with somebody's name. Do you know if he was taken to court? But please excuse me, I'm not being funny or anything. If he was taken to court and I was to stand in the court, and the judge was to say, "Can you confirm your name, sir, that you owe this council tax?" If I told him that I was a man, and that I don't acknowledge the person, "I'm me. I'm..." If I told him that I was a man, and that I don't acknowledge the person, I'm me, I'm, I'm Patrick. So, I'm not the mister, I'm, I'm actually a man. What would he do, do you think?
I have no idea. I don't know. Why?
Well, we think that they, they're actually looking for the legal fiction, the Mister Patrick Noah.
You think what, sir?
That they, that they actually want you to confirm your name and address.
Yeah.
Because it seems in courts, they only deal with legal fictions, they don't deal with men or women. They only deal with the person. But I'm a man, I'm not a person. Aren't you a woman, I'm not a person?
Yeah, she's a woman, I can, I can.
Most definitely.
I've not really, I have not questioned that. What's that? I don't know. I don't, I've never thought about it, to be quite honest, so.
Oh, one of the things we found out is, like, government paperwork always comes with your name in all capital letters.
Like on gravestones?
Yeah, and that refers to your birth certificate, which is your legal fiction created when you were registered. And so, when you go to court and they ask for your name, you don't realise it's written in all capitals, so when you say, yes, I'm Bob Smith, um, you've confirmed that you're the legal fiction Bob Smith, so you've joined them with the legal fiction.
Right. I've never, do you know what?
They're not a private registered corporation for profit, are they?
Hiya Paul, it's Nick in Customer Services. Are you alright? Um, I've got a couple of gentlemen here, um, that are requiring some information regarding why, or the legal definitive of why they've got to pay council tax.
Just, where does it say in law?
And where does it say that it's the law that you have to pay council tax? Right, can you direct me to them, so I can print it off and give it to them, please? Yeah, brilliant. Can you? You just, you want to know why you have to pay?
No, what law, just what law it is.
Or, or what law, or, or?
If they can just tell you the thing, so I can go and look it up, that'd be fine.
Brilliant. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that's great. Yeah, can you email it to Mark Miller though, because I'm sat at his computer at the moment, and then I can print it out. Um, Miller, yeah. 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 Thank you. Thanks, bye. Right, it's going to send me all the information, so you can have a read through that, it will direct you to anywhere else should you want to investigate it further.
Got another question. It's about bailiffs, and it says bailiffs are used only as a last resort, alright?
Yeah.
And then it goes on to say, they have legal powers. Now, I've looked into this, and the bailiff that you use at Equita, which is a private bailiff company, they're not court-registered bailiffs, so they don't have any powers.
Which court do they go through?
What powers are you talking about? That, powers as in to change your.
It says here, they have legal powers. Again, what legal powers do they have? Because the private bailiff has no powers whatsoever.
Yeah.
But you said here they have legal powers.
But legal powers as in?
The council said they have legal powers.
They are allowed. Um. I mean, I.
Is everything okay?
They're, they're allowed to, beg your pardon? What did you just say?
Is everything okay?
Yeah, absolutely fine. They're allowed to, um, come on to your driveway, they're, they're not allowed to enter your property unless you ask, unless you physically invite them in. But they do, I think what that's referring to is, if they're allowed to come into your property, if you invite them in, and then what they'll do is, um, they will then, um, have a look at the goods that you've got. So if you've got a twenty-five, eight inch TV in your front room, or whatever. I mean, I'm not referring to you, so I don't say what you've got in your house. What I'm referring to is in general.
In general, yes, of course.
And then, they are allowed to take the, um, goods from your house, should you not pay your council.
But what happens if you don't allow them in?
If you don't allow them in.
Can't take anything, can they?
It has to come back to the council.
Okay.
Um, if you, if they, if you, if they, put it this way, if you got contacted by a bailiff, um, and you, I don't know, you're in hospital for four months or whatever, they couldn't get into your property, so they couldn't, there was no way of communication whatsoever, they kept knocking on your door, nothing, nothing, nothing. It would be passed back to the council.
So the same would apply then, if you just ignored them?
It's up to you whether you allow them.
I'm not saying, I'm just, you know, trying to get, um, I've got, is the council a court?
No.
Okay, well, well here it says, uh, committal proceedings. This will mean that the council will issue a warrant for your arrest.
Surely any court's allowed to issue warrants?
Well, the council goes to the court.
That's not what it says here.
You know, how, how would you want to pick it to pieces, really? It's, you know, that, that's just the way it is. I mean, if I get, if somebody doesn't know who I am, when they write to me, they put to the occupier, if the name I am, they put my name.
And it says, you must complete and return information within fourteen days. Failure to do so is an offence. Under what law is that?
Again, it's, each council will have, well, will be binded really by the central government and what they say. And our collection policy is this, very, council, council tax is a legal tax, and it's due on the first of every month.
Where does it say in law that, anyone's, excuse me, where does it say in law that anybody's obliged to pay council tax?
Well, I would kind of think it is, really. I mean, if you, if you, if you don't want to, to be honest with you.
We don't want to break the law, but we just, we just asked some questions, that's all. I quite happily pay the council tax.
Council tax is a legal tax at the end of the day.
Do you have the law where it says it's legal?
If you want to go through every single, if you want to go and see a solicitor regarding it, then.
Oh, I want to go and see one of them, they're all in the club together.
At the end of the day, if you don't pay your council tax, you will get taken to court, and ultimately, it will end up in a committal.
So the council used force against you. So surely that's slavery, isn't it?
You don't know what the law is?
No, it's not slavery.
I take it you don't know what the law is?
I mean, if you want to go into like, uh, legal documentation and things like that, I do suggest that you contact.
It's a very easy request, you know, it says in law that you're obliged to pay council tax, that's all.
Yeah, it is, yeah, you are legally obliged.
Could you show us the law, please?
You don't know what the law is, is what we're saying, basically, yeah.
Do you have a copy of the law?
We can, we can have a, we can have a law, we can.
Sure, great.
Legal laws, if you like.
Because, I mean, I've looked and I can't find it.
Right, well, we'll go.
Sorry, we're not being funny or anything, it's just, nobody seems to ask this question. It's so, you know, if you're forced against your will to do something that you don't want to do, why, why should you be forced into paying for something?
Everybody has to pay council tax though, don't they?
Where does it say?
Only if there's a law saying it, so. That's what we're saying, we have looked and I can't find it.
Where did anybody agree to it?
Well, I think you're asking in the wrong place then, aren't you? I think you're going to have to, let me just, let me just phone up.
This is the council, isn't it? We've got the right building. Not being funny or anything, I know it seems, I can see the look on your face, it's a shock and horror.
Well, no, not really, I'm just, I think you're being a little bit, um, not, I don't, I don't think you're being, um.
It's not, it's not a hard request though, is it?
What, what are you actually requesting, you're requesting information regarding, why is it like?
Just where, where does it say in law that everybody has to pay the council tax? Where did we agree to it?
One of the things I did find out is, in America, there is no law that says you have to pay income tax.
Everybody that works for the IRS, the In-Lot Revenue Service, doesn't pay any tax in America, because they know that there's no law which says that you have to pay any tax whatsoever. We did ask this question to Nottingham Law Society. The lady said she hadn't got her law book with her.
Right, so where did you go then, then?
Um, we're going to go and see them again, so we're going to have a look at her law book, but I doubt that she's got one.
Okay. Uh, let me just try and think, this person to ask will be.
A lawyer? You've got, you must have an.
In, in-house legal team?
I mean, you can ask for, um, information regarding this under like freedom of information requests and things like that, you know. So you're quite welcome to put that in writing and request it, or you can email it through, and then you can get your absolute definitive answer, should you require that. Okay, do you want to do that?
Um, well, if you want to just give a quick ring, because they, they might be able to answer it just over the phone.
It should be a pretty easy question to ask, to ask, sorry, to answer. Where you, somebody who say, oh yeah, it's this law, and it's, it's section there, it's right there. We know the council do such wonderful things for, for the community.
The first two is here as customers. Well, if we're a customer, doesn't that mean that you're sort of like a corporation?
Well, we, we call, we call yourselves customers, because you're, you're paying us money and.
But a customer has the, has the choice to pay or not to pay.
Well, I mean, if, if you have that, so if you decide not to pay, then, you know, recovery process will be taken.
But, but so, that's what I'm saying, so you're referring to us as customers, but then we're forced into paying, so we're not really customers.
Okay, sir.
That's the way I see it anyway.
All right, okay.
Um. I think it says, uh, you must complete and return the information within fourteen days. Failure to do so is an offence. Under what law?
I, I don't know, so what, I mean, which, where, you know, what's this in context with, okay. What's the magistrate's have granted liability order? Yeah, so we've taken a liability order, if you haven't paid, then you will be, um, you know, we, we will.
Use force? Will you use force against him if he doesn't pay, sir?
Excuse me, can I just finish what I'm saying there?
I'm sorry, I didn't realise that, I touched a raw nerve there. I can see it in your face.
Just bear with me a moment, please.
Didn't like that, did he? Want to go and sit over there?
Is that my stuff?
Yes.
Is that the rest of the stuff I've got? Oh no, he's got, he's got the rest of it, hasn't he?
Try and get him, if he uses force against you.
Oh, he won't, it would be the, um.
Will the council use force against me? Is the question. Did you see his face? I can see by your face that I've touched him.
Hiya.
Hiya.
Sorry.
No problem.
Let me see if I can help you.
Sure.
But you're going to have to like start at the very beginning. Is it council tax that you're having trouble with?
Yeah, just, just want a few questions. Been to your, been to your website, um, that there?
Revenues says, collect an unpaid council tax for three and four.
Yeah, and I've just noticed a few things. Basically, you refer to us here as customers.
Right.
Now, a customer is, like, say if I go into a shop and I buy something, then I pay for it.
Yeah.
But if I don't pay council tax, I get taken to court. So it, it's almost like we're not a customer, because we're forced into paying.
Alright.
And obviously if we don't, it takes us to court and get a liability order.
Yeah.
So, I'm just queerly.
Well, in, in general, sir, Ruscliffe Borough Council refers to all of the residents as customers. That's just our policy.
Okay.
Um, it could be a resident or it can be a customer, but we refer to you as.
It's confusing, because, you know, it's like Nottingham City Council say, people, but then they call us residents and citizens. But then you're, then if, if you don't register your name, then they call you a legal occupier, and occupier is an illegal army, isn't it? That's what it says in the dictionary.
I think, to be honest, I don't.
Woke up a few, a few months ago, and we, we just decided to start asking questions about everything, because nobody seems to question it. But we've noticed the more we question, the more, well, not you yourself, but other people have become quite angry.
Okay. Well, to be quite honest with you, I suppose a lot of the time, people are angry because you kind of get angry if you don't know the answer to it. But the questions that you're ans, you're asking, really, I think.
It's viable question though, isn't it?
You know, I, I wouldn't know.
Sorry, what's your name?
Nicola.
Hi Nicola.
Hello. Right, the whole act, here we go, P D F, you've chosen to open the whole act, go on, let me take it. See if I can print it all out for you.
Just, just if you can see how many papers, if it's loads of page, papers, pages, then don't bother, I'll go and look it up myself.
Or could you ask the chap on the phone, or whoever you spoke to on the phone, just which section is, is where it says that everybody's obliged to, to pay it? Didn't somebody mention the Local Government Finance Act two thousand and nine before? Can't remember. This is nineteen ninety-two.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's, you can take it home for like reading, it might be, it might not be boring. Oh no, that's two of two hundred and fifty-eight.
Yeah, don't.
No, don't go and print it off.
I've written it there, you can refer to that, but it's like Local Government Finance Act.
Do you know which section it is?
I don't know what section it is.
Nicola, is it possible to ask the person on the phone?
Right, so part one, so if you just, if you read through part one.
I think it's, I've read this before, I've read the Council Tax Act, because it says the person, the person liable to pay the council tax is the, is the, is the, sorry, the responsible person to pay the council tax is the liable person, and the liable person is the person that gives the name. So, what you were saying, if you don't give your name, who are they going to tax? But if you don't give your name, then they use force against you. But that's slavery. We didn't agree to that, did we? The government and the councils, the police, everybody here is our public servants, which we pay for.
Yeah.
For our interests, for, 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 for the men and women that live in the county or the city.
See, I, I can't understand why, when he said that, why didn't you say it's on page such and such, or it's paragraph such and such?
Because this, you know, well, if, if you've looked into a few things yourselves already, you must know that legally, when you look at something that's written down in legal format, it goes on and on and on and on.
And leads you round and round in circles and you still never get anywhere.
People mostly probably can't be bothered to change this, can't bother to review. But you've got about two hundred and odd pages.
It's a good question though, isn't it Nicola? Yeah? You know, where does it say in law, anybody's obliged to pay any tax whatsoever? We did get an answer before, how would a brain surgeon be able to deliver a baby? I think the lady was a little bit confused. So I asked her, where does money come from? How do, where do you think money comes from?
You would think though, with a question like, because that's very important, you would think that they would just be able to go bang like that.
Yeah, it's such and such law section whatever.
You would think so, wouldn't you?
Straight away.
Yeah.
We called HMRC as well. Do you know what he said when I asked the question? I, I'm taxpayer, council taxpayer as well, I just want to ask one question. Yes sir, with pleasure. So where does it say in law that anybody has to pay any tax whatsoever? Do you know what he said? That's a new one. Really?
And he couldn't actually find the law that said you have to pay tax?
He spoke to his manager and they still couldn't find it. That's HMRC, Her Majesty's Revenue Collection Service. I wonder if the Queen knows where it says in law that anybody's obliged to pay any tax? Because the Bank of England seems to magic the money out of thin air, don't they?
But then you've also got your, your arguments, well, alright then, why should we pay tax? But you want, if you collapsed in a hard, having a hard start, you'd want the ambulance to come and pick you up, wouldn't you? You'd want the doctors to like.
Yeah, but income tax doesn't go to any of that.
No, but your council tax goes towards Nottingham County Council that provides your nine-nine-nine services, not your income tax.
Oh, we've looked into that, Nottingham, Nottinghamshire ambulance service, the fire service, they're actually private registered corporation for profit for their shareholders. And we, we can bring in a company report on them if you're interested.
And so's Ruscliffe Borough Council as a private limited company.